Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor. Board of Commissioners, Public Meeting for Tuesday, September sixth, twenty twenty-two. The time is now seven oh two. Pursuant to the requirements for the Open Public Meeting Act, adopted two thirty-one point four nine seventy-five, notice that the same published September ninth, twenty twenty-one issues of the Nutley Town, Trail News Journal Ledger. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Home Loan and Foreman's, and a copy is on file in the State Department's Office. Commissioner Kelly.
President.
Travis.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Here.
Mayor Scott Kelly.
Here.
President, here.
Madam President.
And we have a regular meeting, I think, on the second, twenty twenty-two, and executive session begins from August second, twenty twenty-two, such as far as two. I need a motion.
Move it. Second.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Travis.
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor Scott Kelly.
Aye. Do you have a gadget?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, those, uh, we have three this evening, couple, two read all three. The Lincoln's, yell, submitted an application for fifty-nine, be held on Friday, September thirty, twenty twenty-two, from six P M. to nine P M. at three oh one thousand six hundred and ninety. The Yanacor School, PTO, was also submitted an application for thirty-nine. The event will be held on Friday, September twenty-third, twenty twenty-two, from five P M. Time, time, one, two.
I hear.
Okay, and the third one is the Friends of Nutley Library have submitted an application for social fair permit for their event to be held Sunday of October sixteenth, uh, from two P M. to five P M. at ninety-three Booth Drive in Nutley. I need a motion, please.
Move it. Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scott Kelly.
Aye.
And that's it.
Bills, Madam President.
Thank you. Bill list for September sixth, twenty twenty-two. Public Affairs, eighty-one thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars and forty-two cents. Revenue and Finance, two million nine hundred and twenty-three thousand three hundred and seventy-two dollars and fourteen cents. Public Safety, fifty-nine thousand one hundred and sixty-one dollars and eighty-seven cents. Public Works, seven hundred and thirty-five thousand seven hundred and two dollars and thirty cents. Parks and Public Properties, six hundred and seventy-one thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars and forty-nine cents. Water Utility, fifty thousand six nine dollars and eighty-five cents. Payroll as of, uh, August nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. Regular payroll total, eight hundred and forty-nine thousand nine hundred and forty-seven dollars and eighty-four cents. Overtime payroll total, fifty-one thousand eight hundred and ninety-four dollars and eighty-two cents. Total payroll, nine hundred and one thousand eight hundred and forty-two dollars and sixty-six cents. For a grand total of five million four hundred and twenty-three thousand nine hundred and sixty-five dollars and seventy-three cents.
Move the bills. Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scott Kelly. That's it.
Public comment on Agenda Island only, Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name and address to the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to three minutes. All remarks of the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the Mayor. The Mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board.
Rory Moore, one eleven Passaic Avenue. Mary, I have three questions about the bills this evening. Your second page, at the third down, it's rock and rescue. Leave it in the public safety. Nine hundred and fifty-five dollars, what was that for?
Second, second page.
Second page, top of the, very high on the, the top list.
I would have to get back to you on that one.
But that's okay. And, uh, one at the bottom of it was Zappos, the car stereo. What was that for?
I had to get back to you with that one.
That's quite all right. And Mayor, the, the last one is yours. I see there's a water bill from Newark for thirteen thousand dollars. I understand, if, if I, if I understood correctly, that was the water polluted during that, that time period that we received water from Newark? Was it polluted at all? No.
They had a water vein break, that's all.
Okay, maybe that was it, thank you.
Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners on Agenda Island only? Board of Commissioner now.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Tucci.
Yes, our scheduled concert up for tomorrow evening, featuring the Rick Martin Orchestra, open on its phone. Uh, due to the climate weather, we will reschedule and let everyone know when that is. Thank you.
I would just like to, um, say that I attended the Nutley, um, football game, uh, along with my fellow commissioners and the mayor, under the lights for the first time in Nutley history. I think that was the first football game played. I think it's such a plus for the community, and I, I can't say how delighted I am to have it. I think it makes, um, our Franklin Ave. businesses, um, strive even more. And I'd just like to thank the mayor for bringing me on the field to accept the mayor's trophy that night. I think it was a great night for Nutley. Thank you, Mayor.
Think we have to get the, uh, businesses to coordinate. It was hard to find someplace to eat. The diner was closed.
Yes, on September twenty-seventh, we'll be having a, uh, another COVID, uh, vaccination clinic, whether you need, uh, your first shot or your, your now your fourth shot, uh, which has been approved by the FDA. Uh, feel free to sign up, more information will be sent out, uh, through the Town Blast.
Thank you, Commissioner. Orders introduction, Commissioner Patraco. Orders introduction.
Oh, yes. Okay. Okay, I have ordinance number thirty-five hundred. It's an ordinance to amend an ordinance codified in the Code of Township and Nutley, Chapter two-two-eight, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, particularly Article seven, Special Zones and Areas, Section twenty-nine, entitled Handicap Parking, to the location set forth thereon. This is for three handicap, um, places for Yanacor Place. I move that this ordinance be passed as second reading advertising in Nutley Sun, together with the notice required by law, that further consideration of said ordinance for final passage by the Board of Commissioners to be held at its second meeting, I believe it's October fourth.
Yes.
Move it.
Second.
Second. Aye.
Aye.
Bishop Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scott Kelly.
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, we have some, uh, second meetings available here. Commissioner, uh, Tucci.
Yes, this is, uh, Chapter one twenty-seven concerning benefits, these, uh, things of the like. And basically, this is cleanup of existing ordinance, uh, to bring us up to a concert with the state law. Uh, we had some areas that were bid ambiguous, uh, clarify, and then they, uh, have explicitly been.
Would anybody like to be heard on ordinance number three, four, nine, six?
Rory Moore, eleven, one eleven Passaic Avenue. I believe, Commissioner Tucci, this was the, from Vincent versus Mentor Savings Bank. And I remember discussing this with Judge Dan in Temp, now Judge Dan in Tempo, and, uh, Mr. Harkins when he was a town attorney. This is absent for a long, long time, and it's overdue. But I also noticed that.
Wait, was that a compliment?
No, it's not a compliment. No, I, I mean, twenty years later, it was upheld by the Supreme Court.
I was wondering, I didn't think so.
It, it was upheld by the Supreme Court back in two thousand and eight, I think it was. It, it's, I believe there's supposed to be a yearly review that every employee is supposed to take, and I don't see that in here. The reason I'm asking is because everybody else has to do that.
Like, you're speaking of, this is not the hand, this is ordinance one twenty-seven concerning personnel.
Personnel policy.
And I know you're a guy that pays attention, so.
Page seven, am I on the right page? Page seven to thirteen? Bottom right, at least you got pages on, on this. If we can get them on the bill list, that'd be better.
What, what exactly are you referring?
Up at the top.
Sexual harassment on page seven.
Sexual harassment, one twenty-seven dash twenty-one. Now, in there, you go through what could be sexual harassment. Also, what should be in here, that is, is in everybody else's, is that annually, everybody, all employees and contractors have to go through sexual harassment training as part of this.
Mr. Moore, I know you've done studies, and, uh, I'm sure this is a conversation that you would be, uh, better to have with our county attorney, Mr. Bruno. I am not a lawyer, I just administer the health benefits and the other benefits according to the ordinance.
And the second, I.
That, that needs to be in there, it would be wonderful if you would have that conversation with Mr. Bruno, and if he feels that it's appropriate, then it should be included.
And the other one is that, it says there's a complaint process. You say complaint two. That person, the name, is supposed to be filled in, and it's not. Who do I, if I'm a town employee, I've just been sexually harassed, who do I complain to?
Government employee, uh, half a career government employee, I am not an attorney, so if you want to take up those fine points, do that with Mr. Bruno, and I'm sure he'd be happy to answer all your questions.
Sure he will.
Thank you so much for raising. Would anybody else like to be heard on ordinance number three, four, nine, six? Seeing none? Move to closed public hearing?
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Bishop Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scott Kelly.
Aye. Move the ordinance?
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Travis.
Aye.
Bishop Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scott Kelly.
Aye. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioner. We have, uh, another public hearings, uh, a public hearing on ordinance number three, four, nine, nine. Bishop Patraco.
An ordinance to amend an ordinance codified in the Code of Township and Nutley, Chapter two-two-eight, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, particularly Article five, Stop and Yield in Intersections. This one is, um, for Fleming Road and Cook Road, four-way stop sign. Fill in some portion of the meeting there.
Anybody would like to be heard on ordinance number three, four, nine, nine? Seeing none?
It's closed.
Second.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans. Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Bishop Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scott Kelly.
Aye. Move the ordinance?
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Bishop Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scott Kelly.
Aye. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioner. Move on to resolutions. Commissioner Kelly?
Thank you, Mayor, I have four on for this evening. First one is Resolution number two thirty-one twenty-two. Uh, this is, uh, raise awareness for, it's Blood Cancer Month. Uh, whereas leukemia, lymphoma, myeloma, myelodysplastic syndromes, MDS, are types of cancer that can affect the bone marrow, the blood cells, lymph nodes, and other parts of the, of the lymphatic system. Whereas every three minutes, someone in the United States is diagnosed with blood cancer, more than one point three million Americans are living with or are in remission from blood cancer. And whereas an estimated combined total of two hundred twelve thousand four hundred and ninety people in the United States are expected to be diagnosed with leukemia, lymphoma, myeloma in twenty twenty-two. Whereas blood cancer accounts for six percent of all cancer cases around the world, with about one point two four million cases each year. Whereas blood cancers can be extremely complex, with some patients requiring a bone marrow slash stem cell transplant as part of their treatment. Whereas an estimated one million two hundred and ninety-seven thousand twenty-seven people in the U.S. are either living with or remission from leukemia, lymphoma, or myeloma. Whereas the health and vitality of Nutley residents are significantly enhanced by local efforts to increase communication and education pertaining to blood cancers and raising general awareness of the disease. And therefore, it be resolved that the Board of Commissioners and Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey recognizes September as National Blood Cancer Month, and urge all citizens in Nutley to support efforts and activities that bring awareness and education to finding a cure for blood cancers during the month of September and throughout the entire year. So moved.
Second.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye, I would just add a comment. Uh, blood cancers have advanced rapidly in the last four or five years. With the introduction of, of monoclonal antibodies for immunotherapy, as well as the understanding of how checkpoint inhibitors work, the outlook of patients here has improved dramatically. So it's, and the reason why that's significant is because it's only six percent of the cancer. You know, getting a significant amount of research into this area has been difficult. So, more awareness that can be placed on significance of this will actually enable the very long run.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Patraco.
Aye.
Scott Kelly.
Aye.
I also have on for this month a, a resolution for Hispanic Heritage Month. That's number res- Resolution number two thirty-two twenty-two, where September fifteenth serves jointly as starting point of Hispanic Heritage Week and Independence of, and the Independence of Hispanic Countries of Costa Rica, El Salvador, Honduras, Guatemala, and Nicaragua. Whereas the observation of Hispanic Heritage started in nineteen sixty-eight, nineteen sixty-eight as Hispanic Heritage Week, under President Lyndon Johnson, and was expanded by President Ronald Reagan in nineteen eighty-eight, on Hispanic, Hispanic Heritage Month. Whereas, whereas there are sixty-two point one in Hispanics in the United States, twenty-three percent more than previous decade. And whereas it is important to celebrate and recognize the common sense contribution to cultural rich, richness of Hispanic Americans and Hispanics worldwide. Whereas Hispanic Heritage Month, presentation of Hispanic culture and heritage vast expands visibility and inclusion of Hispanic, Hispanic people on a large scale and degree. Whereas educating on Hispanic culture and heritage helps fortify diversity within communities, plus discussion pertaining to different cultures and ideologies. And therefore, it be resolved that the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, recognizes September fifteenth through October fifteenth as Hispanic Heritage Month. Encourage all Nutley residents to recognize the rich, rich, green culture that comes with Hispanic heritage. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans. Bishop Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci. Mayor Scott Kelly.
Aye.
The, uh, third one I have on for this evening is National Preparedness Month. It's Resolution number two thirty-three twenty-two. Whereas every year, communities across our country face emergencies from unforeseen natural disasters to deliberate act. And whereas during the month of September, we encourage residents to rededicate themselves to the important task of being prepared in the face of any crisis. Whereas the best time to prepare for an emergency is before it happens. Residents should take the time to review their own emergency plans and update their emergency kits. And whereas by discussing with our families, friends, neighbors, how we will protect ourselves and our communities, we can contribute to, share in a stronger, more resilient society. Whereas federal, state, and local agencies have resources to share with the community as to how to put together personal emergency kits and plans, such as W W W dot ready dot gov and W W W dot KEMA dot gov. And now therefore, it be resolved, Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, recognizes September twenty twenty-two as National Preparedness Month, encourage all Nutley residents to recognize the importance of preparedness and work together to enhance our resilience and readiness. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Bishop Patraco.
Aye.
Mayor Scott Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci, thank you.
Uh, and the final one I have on this evening is, is, uh, another resolution, raise awareness for another form of cancer, because, uh, September's a big month for cancer awareness. Whereas there are more than three point one million men in the United States who have diagnosed prostate cancer, and whereas one in eight males in the United States diagnosed with prostate cancer in their lifetime. Whereas the American Cancer Society in the United States for twenty twenty-two, about two hundred and sixty-eight thousand four hundred and ninety new cases of prostate cancer, about thirty-four thousand five hundred deaths due to prostate cancer. Whereas aside from non-melanoma skin cancer, prostate cancer is the most common cancer among men in the United States. It is also one of the leading causes of cancer death among men of all races and his, of all races, including men of Hispanic origin and population. Whereas prostate cancer occurs mainly in older men, about six cases in ten are diagnosed in men aged sixty-five or older, and it is rare before age forty. The average age of, at the time of diagnosis, is about sixty-six. Whereas males in the United States with one family member diagnosed with prostate cancer have a thirty-three percent chance of being diagnosed with a disease. Males with two close family members have an eighty-three percent chance, and males with three family members diagnosed have a ninety-seven percent chance. Whereas there are no noticeable symptoms of prostate cancer on the early stages, making screening is critical. Whereas educating people in the United States, including healthcare providers, about prostate cancer and early detection strategies is, is crucial to saving lives of males, preserving and protecting families. And therefore, it be resolved that the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, declares September as National Prostate Cancer Awareness Month. It be further resolved that we urge all men and their families in the Township of Nutley to seek assistance in obtaining facts and information about prostate cancer, encourage residents to support, uh, the Nutley Football Alumni in their effort to benefit prostate cancer research through their annual Golf for a Cure, Golf for a Cure event Monday, September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Bishop Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scott Kelly.
Aye. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Mayor, my first resolution, uh, two-two-six dash twenty-two, uh, resend Resolution two oh eight twenty-two, so moved.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Bishop Patraco.
Aye.
My next resolution.
Aye.
And Mayor, and Mayor Scott.
There you go. Uh, my next resolution, uh, twenty, two twenty-seven twenty-two, uh, authorizes refund of overpayments for water charges for account thirty-eight oh two, seven, uh, dash seventeen and three oh two dash one, for a total amount of three thousand five hundred and ninety-eight dollars and forty cents. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Bishop Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scott Kelly.
Aye.
And my last resolution for, uh, two, two twenty-eight, two twenty-two, the overpayment of tax charges for block, uh, seven, ninety oh six, uh, slash five, twenty-eight oh one slash eight, twenty-four oh one slash fifty-three, for a total amount of ten thousand thirty dollars and ninety-three cents, as listed in the resolution, so moved.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Second.
Bishop Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scott Kelly.
Aye. Thank you, Commissioner. Bishop Patraco? I have no resolution, but, like, this is probably also, thank you guys for chilling out. Move on to my resolutions. Uh, Resolution two-two-nine dash twenty-two, whereas the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, Board of Commissioners identified certain properties in the township designated as follows on the official tax map of the township, collectively the study area, also known as top of the road site, to be considered for designation as a condemnation area in need of redevelopment, under the local redevelopment housing law in J S A forty-eight, twelve, eight, dash, one, uh, redevelopment law. And whereas on August eighteen, twenty twenty-two, the redevelopment apply for a certificate of completion and compliance for the phase-one premises. And whereas the township has confirmed the substantial completion of the phase, phase-one premises pursuant to the terms of the redevelopment agreement. Now therefore, it be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the mayor and the township clerk be and hereby authorized to execute and attest, respectively, a certificate of completion and compliance for the phase-one premises, so moved the resolution. Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Aye.
Bishop Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scott Kelly.
Aye. Whereas raffle applications have been received from the following organizations, Rotary Club of Nutley, license number forty-seven dash twenty-two, off-premises, fifty-fifty cash raffle, to be held Thursday, November seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. PTO, Nutley Lincoln School, license number forty-eight dash twenty-two, on-premise merchandise raffle, to be held Friday, November eleventh, twenty twenty-two. Nutley Irish American Alliance, license number forty-nine twenty-two, off-premise fifty-fifty cash, uh, raffle, to be held Friday, December ninth, twenty twenty-two. And the Rotary Club of Nutley, license number fifty dash twenty-two, off-premises fifty-fifty cash raffle, to be held Friday, December third, twenty twenty-two. Whereas the application's been reviewed and approved by the Minister, Clerk, and Police Department. Now therefore, it be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the aforementioned licenses are approved and the Minister, Clerk, is authorized to issue said licenses. Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Aye.
Bishop Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scott Kelly.
Aye. It be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the township clerk is hereby authorized to advertise the sealed bid for twenty twenty-three acceptance of recycling that state of waste that's been deep in grass flipping in the township of Nutley to be received on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, Commission Chambers, Township Hall, One Hundred and Drive, Nutley, New Jersey, on Wednesday, September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two, at eleven A.M., prevailing time of which time they will be open to the reservation. Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Aye.
Bishop Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scott Kelly.
Aye. Whereas Nutley is a member of the Morris County Cooperative Pricing Council, whereas the Morris County Co-op awarded a bid for road resurfacing to Tilcon, New York, nine Eden Road, Parsippany, New Jersey, for the period of January first, twenty twenty-two, to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Whereas Nutley wishes to utilize the merit, Morris County Co-op for milling and paving roadways at various locations in Nutley. Whereas funds are available from account number G oh four one nineteen four oh five, ordinance number three one eight three A, the amount of a hundred and eighty thousand eight hundred dollars. Account number G oh four one five three four oh one, ordinance number three three seven one, the amount of fifty-seven thousand three hundred and ninety-six dollars and ninety-four cents. Account G four one five oh four oh one, ordinance number three four oh seven, the amount of a hundred and fifty-four thousand four hundred and four, four hundred and fifty-seven dollars. And account number G four four one six seven four oh one, ordinance number three four five six, the amount of a hundred and seven thousand three hundred and forty-six dollars and six cents. And have been certified by the Chief Financial, Financial, Certified Certification attached to this resolution. Whereas Engineering Services recommended that the attached change order number one, the amount of a hundred and three thousand six hundred and forty-one dollars and thirty-seven cents for additional quantities for a contract amount of six hundred and forty-three dollars. Forty-three thousand six hundred and forty-one dollars and thirty-seven cents, whereas funds are available from account number G oh four one seventy four oh one, the amount of a hundred and three thousand six hundred and forty-one dollars and thirty-seven cents. And have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, Set Certification attached to the resolution. Now therefore, it be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that change order number one, as attached, is a change from the original contract of work, so called, to hereby authorize a change from the contract.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Bishop Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scott Kelly.
Aye. Whereas bids for N J D O T Grant Avenue Railway Improvement Project, Section one, were received and opened on November seventh, twenty nineteen. Whereas Tilcon and general contract, any more practical name, the Delta, was below bidder. And whereas the base bid for the N J D O T Grant Avenue Railway Improvement Project, Section one, was the amount of three hundred and seventy-six thousand four hundred and eighty-one dollars, for a total bid amount of three hundred and seventy-six thousand four hundred and eighty-one dollars. And whereas change order number one has been authorized from account G four oh six oh one four oh one, ordinance number three four two two, of the original contract amount to be reduced in the amount of three-six thousand eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars and fifty-seven cents, for a total contract price of three hundred and twenty-nine thousand four hundred and twenty-one dollars and forty-three cents. Now therefore, it be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that change order number one, as attached, is a change from the contract previously made by the Township of Nutley with the Philly and so on. General contract into the project known as N J D O T Grant Avenue Railway and Project, Section one, are hereby authorized and can be moved, so moved. Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Bishop Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scott Kelly.
Aye. Second concludes the business portion of our meeting.
Mayor. Before you, before you open it up, I did, I forgot about a very important announcement that I have, if you don't mind.
Yes, Commissioner.
This Sunday, we will be having our nine-eleven ceremony, right here in front of, um, Town Hall at one P M. Um, a lot of towns, I'm seeing, are not having ceremonies, and not only has it affected the people on nine-eleven that passed away in those towers, all the first responders. But I happened to visit my cousin, who's a New York City police officer, this past couple of weeks ago, was in Florida, and he's retired. It's also affected many, many of them, men and women who were on site cleaning up and in that environment have passed over the last few years. So even our town, who I know never forgets, our ceremony has been a little late the last few years. So I'm urging all the residents, and of course, my commissioners and mayor, please, if you have the time, attend. Let's not be one of those towns that forget what happens, because to me, families are still traveling. Kids grew up without parents, you know, and that tragic day. So if you can make it, I urge everybody to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Let's move on to public comment. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concern, secure ports of the microphone and provide your name and address to the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to five minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the mayor. The mayor may defer citizen comments to the appropriate member of the Board.
Rory Moore, one eleven Bayside Avenue. Mayor Scott Kelly, I have an issue. I've spoken to Mr. Bruno briefly about it, and I feel very important, it should be on the public agenda at least. Inglisino was paid $215 an hour to file a motion to suppress discovery in a parking ticket for a local resident. When I saw this, the first question he asked is, what's Inglisino doing involved with? Now, I remember, I believe it was Mr. Evans had a resolution covering Oprah and other legal issues where you could use Inglisino at $215 an hour for anyone that was billable. But I'd like to know, and my concern is, who called them? I run. I'm tired. So I go over to Al Patraco's delicatessen. We have a bilateral agreement. I'll give you money, you give me solicitation pebbles. It works well. Nowhere in the order of the resolution, who calls Inglisino the legal work? Now, this is written on behalf of a lieutenant who had nothing to do with the case whatsoever, who had no involvement whatsoever. How did it get there? Through the taxpayer dollars? Because, Mr. Bruno, and I speak as soon as I finish my opening, is that if it was a legal issue, the court is capable of handling the issues by the court itself. They're independent of everybody else. How did Inglisino get there? That's what concerns me, because the taxpayers paid a lot of money to file a motion to suppress discovery. And if the issue, as I understand it, it could have been done on a motion of limited. It didn't have to be this way. And when you look at the bill list every week, we always pay at least $100 to LexisNexis, which is a service that the municipal court can use to look up legal questions. So my question is, how did Inglisino get there?
So I don't, I don't know if you spoke to Jonathan already?
Yeah, yes, and if he wanted, but Mr. Bruno is speaking.
We had conversations, and I think Jonathan could explain it, if that's okay, may Jonathan?
Yes, you've spoken earlier, but I'm happy to go through it again for everyone's clarification. The, thank you. The, the issue, and you framed it somewhat accurately, is if this were a typical discovery demand in the normal course, the prosecutor and the records department would be perfectly equipped to handle it and would provide the information requested in due course. In this particular instance, there was something that was requested that was outside the normal course, and there was a question as to whether or not this information was discoverable. The information that was requested was GPS information relating to the officer's vehicle. Now, the, this, because it was a kind of a request that had come outside the normal discovery process in terms of what's normally provided, the records department ran it up the chain appropriately because there was a private, privacy concern over that information. Not that there was an actual threat that someone thought that someone was targeting police officers, but obviously, as you can understand, the whereabouts of police officers, you know, their patrol car habits, that information, there's a security concern as to releasing that particular information. So based on that, the Inglisino law firm filed a motion, and I believe it was granted, to protect that particular information, and they were not involved in, in the release of any of the other discoverable information. So, so the Inglisino law firm was, was brought in appropriately to file a motion to protect what we determined was protected information relating to officer safety because it discussed the whereabouts, the patrol habits of, of police cars.
I, I respect your opinion and your answer. However, why Inglisino? We, we pay for LexisNexis, there is an avenue, the court has it. We, we brought another, we brought another, the taxpayers came in, had taxpayers' expenses, this has been a court expense. And this is not the first time, that's the second thing that bothers me, that this is actually the third time this has happened. And who has the discretion to say, let's call Inglisino?
Again, we could speak more about this offline. I think that when it relates to Oprah and it touches on privacy, you know, the Inglisino firm, that's one of the areas that we employ them for, and, and this issue touched on that, and there was a officer safety issue, and the town has an interest in the privacy of that information. And that's why it was important to, to have that motion filed on behalf of the town for that particular issue. Had that issue not come up, Inglisino's firm would not have been involved whatsoever.
I'll be happy to talk it offline, but there were two other issues that I wanted to have addressed. Because this is, you're being, Inglisino is the grand old, the find all for everybody, $215, let's ask them. But we also pay other monies for that service. The way that was, the motion was filed rather competently, you file a motion to suppress, it should have been motion and limiting to say, it should have had a motion to say, could you hear it? Because I researched it through records, and there is case law, only on a local level, there was never appealed. Yes, some given and some don't. And it's, it's really right now, because of the limited appeals, that it's valid. However, not arguing the issue, my, my concern is, why do we just have this blanket saying, call Inglisino? I have a legal question.
And, and Mr. Moore, with all due respect, I, I don't think that it's done, you know, like that. I think that the taxpayers' money is always kept, you know, very much in the forefront of, of everybody's mind. And, you know, we try to be as economical as possible. Again, I'm happy to discuss this with you offline and take as much time as you.
I'll stipulate, I, I will email you with my concerns. So at least we have it on the record, because I would like the answers to the other two questions as well. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, Madam Clerk.
Move it.
Second.
Whereas Section Eight of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter two thirty-one, Public Order nineteen seventy-five, permits the exclusion of the public for meeting in certain circumstances. And whereas the public bodies of the opinion that such circumstances exist. And whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nully and the County of Essex and State of New Jersey desires to proceed to closed executive session. Now therefore, be resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nully move into closed executive session to discuss contract negotiations and potential litigation. Be a further resolved that a time when such discussion may be disclosed to the public shall be when and as such disclosure may be made adversely affecting the Township of Nully, pending and or anticipated legal personnel, contractual matters, and other matters within the exception provided for by statute. This resolution shall take effect immediately. Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Bishop Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scott Kelly.
Aye. We will have no further business, so can I have a motion to adjourn?
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Bishop Patraco. Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scott Kelly.
Aye.
And the time is now seven forty-two.
Thank you, everyone, have a good night.